That was some ballgame.
The 27th September 2021 Jackson County Commission meeting is called to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here. We do have a busy agenda tonight. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Manning, our county administrator, to please call the roll to establish a quorum.
Yes, sir. Mr. Rich?
Present.
Mr. Venable?
Present.
Mr. Buckner?
Present.
Mr. McBride?
Present.
We do have a quorum. I'd like to ask Mr. Porter, our county attorney, please, off our invocation, and Commissioner McBride, please lead our Pledge of Allegiance. All, please stand.
God, our most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful to be here for this day, this beautiful weather you've given us. We're thankful for all these blessings. Now, we know that you're mindful of the plight that we have amongst our populace dealing with the COVID virus, and we just pray that you'll take that from us and you'll continue to be with us and guide us and direct us through those troubled times, be with the families that have lost loved ones and have currently have loved ones that are sick. Just be with us, God, and guide us and direct us every day in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We, there's an agenda in your packet, and I would like to make a motion that we make some additions to this agenda. One motion is to add approval of the resolution for the Expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act funding for premium pay and for the chairman to sign. And secondly, add to the agenda motion to approve extension of the current temporary position, that is, at county park maintenance for a period of two months. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the proposed additions?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda's approved with the recommended additions. Do we have any awards and presentations tonight? Do we have any public comment tonight? Okay, thank you. So we'll move next into the new business portion of our meeting. We have several items on the agenda tonight. First, do I have a motion in your packet or the minutes for the 13th September meeting, as well as the budget hearing that was conducted on the 13th of September?
I'm making a motion to approve those together.
We have a motion to approve those together, a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is carried. At our last meeting, we accepted and approved annual bids, with the exception of the annual gas and diesel bid. We put that back out for a rebid. I would like to ask our county engineer and director of Public Works to discuss the rebid results.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. So, in your packet, you should have a sheet that lists the supplier of the bid, the date that the bid was opening, the rebid was opening, and the time was 10:00 AM. So, in that list, you should see, it should look like this. That is the vendor that we are recommending award to based on the results of the rebid opening.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the annual gas and diesel bid for Public Works?
I make the motion to approve Jet Oil as the gas supplier.
Second?
We have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Also, at our last meeting, we had a discussion of the bids that had been received on the communication tower rebuild and repair. I'd like to ask our Director of EMA to discuss those and the recommended contract for selection.
This money will be for replacement of collapsed cables and antennas in preparation for footwear, all those that move to digital, which comes with some, that's going to be coming down from the SEC sometime, just to get us in operation for at least the next 25 years, right? So, we would like to ask that the work be done by Mobile Communications of America to help with those projects.
Okay, any questions?
Just concern, Paul, you said we're ready for conversion to digital. Will we still be able to do non-digital communications in case of, okay?
Okay, any other questions? So, do I have a motion to approve communications tower rebuild and repair contract award to Mobile Communications America?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Also, at our last meeting, we had discussion of surplusing the old truck, park truck, county park truck. In your packet is a sheet, a letter that discusses that. And do I have a motion? Can I get a motion at this time to approve surplusing the older county park truck?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, a second?
I'll second.
We have a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. At our last courthouse security meeting, we discussed set of courthouse security and safety rules and procedures. The security committee voted unanimously to approve, contingent upon approval by the county commission. In your packet is that set of proposed safety rules and procedures. Do I have a motion to approve the courthouse security and safety rules and procedures?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second? Motion carries. In your packet is a letter regarding the hiring committee's recommendation for a vacant bus driver for rural public transportation at the Council of Aging. Do I have a motion to approve the hiring committee's recommendation for the vacant bus driver for rural public transportation at Council and Aging?
I make the motion that we approve the hiring committee's recommendation.
We have a motion, a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Also, in your packet is a letter from our Director of Parks and Recreation recommending that we extend the current temporary position for county park maintenance for a period of two months. Do I have a motion to approve the extension of the current temporary position for county park maintenance for two months?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. This month, we will appoint members to three boards. The Jackson County Healthcare Authority Board, the Department of Human Resources Board, and the Jackson County Personnel Board. In your packet is a list of members of our community that have requested consideration. First, I would like to move to get nominations for the Jackson County Healthcare Authority. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate Jim Barclay.
Do I have? And by the way, here we are nominating, we will be nominating three individuals to fill the three upcoming vacancies. Do I have a second nomination?
I'll second Mr. Rich's, that was the second nomination. I'll second Mr. Rich's nomination.
Okay. Do we have, all in favor of that nomination, say aye? If I may, let me back up just a minute. I think we need a roll call on that vote. Mr. Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Venable?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckner?
Yes, with great honor.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Mr. James Barclay is appointed as a member of the upcoming board.
I'd like to nominate Ron Ricker.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second? Roll call vote to approve Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Venable?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckner?
Yes, with great pleasure.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker is appointed to the board. Do I have a third nomination?
Chairman, I'd be honored to nominate Mr. Greg DeVries as our third nominee.
Do I have a second?
I'll second Mr. Buckner's nomination.
Do, so at this time, roll call. Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Venable?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckner?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
We do have three individuals nominated to fill the vacancies with the Jackson County Healthcare Authority. They are Mr. Jim Barclay, Mr. Ron Ricker, Mr. Greg DeVries. So, thank you. We have filled the three positions. The next board that we will seek nominations for is the Department of Human Resource Board. We have three individuals that has submitted applications or requests to be considered. I will make note that one individual has submitted a request for this or to be considered for the Jackson County Personnel Board, either board. We will be selecting two individuals to fill the two vacancies. Do I have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Tim Kennison.
We have a nomination for Mr. Kennison, a second?
I'll second.
We have a second? Roll call vote. Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Venable?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Do we have a second nomination?
I'll nominate Sharon Patterson.
We have a nomination of Miss Sharon Patterson. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second? Roll call vote. Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Venable?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
We have two nominees, our approvals for filling the two vacancies for the Department of Human Resource Board, Mr. Tim Kennison and Miss Sharon Patterson. The other board that we will seek a nominee for is the Jackson County Personnel Board. We have one vacancy coming up at this time. Do I have a nomination?
I'm late, Ms. Anita McGill.
We have a nomination of Ms. McGill. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second? Roll call vote. Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Venable?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
So, we have filled the nomination and the Personnel Board with Ms. Anita McGill. So, thank you for your consideration of these candidates, and I'd like to say thank you for all the individuals and people in the county that submitted their request to be considered. Thank you. Next on the agenda is move into the area of our FY 2022 budget. We have several items to consider there. First, I would like to thank the Commissioners, Sheriff Phillips, Commissioner Jeff Arnold, Probate Judge Victor Manning, and our department heads and county administrator of Bob Manning, and certainly our human resource personnel for the work that they did as we went through a number, and I would call it numerous budget hearings, to review prior year budgets, our county operations, and the services that we provide across the county. One of the first items that we will look at tonight is in your packet, you have a set of organization charts, classification plans, and job descriptions for positions of sanitation driver one, sanitation driver two, the grant and project coordinator, and the deputy revenue commissioner and director. These job descriptions have been modified or changed, and so they will need to be approved. So, at this time, do I have a motion to approve the proposed organization charts, classification plans, job descriptions for the sanitation driver one, sanitation driver two, the grant and project coordinator, and the deputy revenue commissioner and director?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Also, in your packet is a letter. During the budget hearing, we discussed a number of adjustments to organization within the various departments. Those adjustments are listed in the letter that you have attached. So, at this point, do I have a motion to approve the personnel changes discussed in the budget hearings according to the attached letter?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second? And all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. One of the things that we are considering in this year's budget is to provide to our employees premium pay. In your packet is a resolution for expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act funds for premium pay. Premium pay of 75 cents per hour work for those that are eligible for this pay. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution for the Expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act funding for premium pay and for the chairman to sign the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. In your packet is the budget for proposed for FY 2022. I'd like to make a few comments. Again, we had numerous hearings to review last year's budgets, our operations, and our services. This budget that we have put in place, that we propose, funds our sheriff's department, the revenue commission, our probate office, our council of aging, and our county departments that provide the critical services for the citizens of our county. During these budget hearings, we recognized that there was one issue that we did need and we do need to address, and that is pay for our county employees. We have had three pay raises for our county employees over the last nine years. Our pay is no longer competitive either with our surrounding counties, the city of Scottsboro, or particularly the private sector. And we're losing employees, good employees, that are trained in the jobs that they hold here, and we cannot attract new employees due to the inadequacy of our pay. One example is a young man who submitted a, his letter of resignation and stated that he loved his job here with Jackson County, but he could no longer afford to stay in that job because he had to take care of his wife and three children. And he had spent his savings staying in the job, and he was having to find a job that provided him better pay. That is one example of a number of requests that we have had, or letters submit for resignation of position stating the same fact. There have been times when we have put out notices for hiring, and we have gotten one or two, and in some cases, no applicants for jobs. In a number of those cases where we get one or two, the hiring committees have recommended not to make a recommendation because individuals who had applied were not qualified for the job. So, at this time, the Commissioners, looking at the budget in these conditions, made the decision that we needed to take some action to help our employees and to address this pay issue. As a part of this budget, we will adjust our starting pay by adding 75 cents to the starting pay for the initial grade one, step one pay. Other steps and grades will be adjusted appropriately. We will institute a new pay scale, changing the pay scale from the 25 cent step scale to a 3% step scale. We will add a minimum of 30 cents raise to every individual's pay, and then we will place them on the new pay scale. And then, we will determine where they are on the pay scale. If they're between two steps, we will move them up to the upper pay step. The effective pay period will begin October the 11th. We will also, in addition to the items mentioned, implement premium pay for our essential personnel. We have determined that all members of our county staff, the employees of the county, are essential personnel. They have worked through the pandemic. They have kept the county open and operating through the pandemic, whether they're in the courthouse serving the people or they're in the field serving the people. And they have done a tremendous job of taking care of our county. So, we will provide premium pay of an additional 75 cents per hour for eligible employees. Additionally, an item that the Commissioners raised was the cost of family health care. We pay currently and always have paid individual health care benefit, but family health care was paid by the individual members who's elected to accept family health care. We will, for the first time, supplement our employees that decide to take family health care with $150 per month in addition to their pay. Now, health care cost went up 5.9% this year. That was a raise of $47 to the family health care cost. So, in effect, to be quite candid, what we're basically doing is supplementing about $100 or helping with about $100. But every individual who accepts family health care insurance will have an additional $150 in their pay to help supplement the cost of family health care. These pay actions will include all full-time and part-time county employees, elected officials, and the county administrator. It is, I want to make a note that all the county Commissioners, all county Commissioners, have elected to decline to accept the pay raise in order to focus on pay raises for our county employees. The county budget that we are proposing to implement tonight includes a Jackson County Commission revenue budget of $28,230,809, and the Jackson County Commission expenditure budget of $27,651,952. Additionally, the Jackson County Commission general fund revenue budget of $9,500,39, and the Jackson County Commission general fund expenditure budget of $9,248,210. Any comments from our Commissioners? Any questions?
Chairman, on the premium pay, it comes out of American Rescue Funds, and it's a temporary, unless the Commission in the future decides to make that a permanent thing. Is that what I understand? And that's what we talked about. We want to make sure that we're very clear on that.
Yeah, that was, Mr. Venable, thank you for that clarification. It's exactly the discussion that you guys brought forward, and that is the way it will be administered. We can use the American Rescue Plan Act funds for three years at that point. We would hope we're in a budget position that we can continue that through use of funds other than American Rescue Plan Act funds. Any other comments or questions?
I want to echo the tremendous amount of work that Mr. Manning, Ms. Willis, Ms. Whitehead, yourself, the Commissioners being involved, and a big shout out to all the department heads that looked for ways to have the solency to make sure that they could take care of their employees. It was a wonderful team effort, and I hope that you all know that we greatly appreciate the extra time and effort that went into line by line, working on this, justifying this, and it was really, it was a hard process, but a very good process, and I was glad to be a part of it.
Any other comment? But then I also would like to say thanks, and I'm going to say thanks again to the Commissioners, because they were committed to this budget and taking care of our county employees from the first time we sit down in our budget hearings.
Well, in turn, I'd like to thank the Chairman for the amount of work he put into it. He accepted this appointment while he was enjoying retirement, didn't have to, and he definitely put in the work there, not only during this budget cycle, but many, many other things that we've had going on in the county. And I'd just like to say on behalf of the Commission, we appreciate you.
He is, Chairman, you're doing a fair, you're doing a fantastic job. I want to echo that, and you're more than dedicated to do the job.
Okay, we're going to move on. Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve the Jackson County Commission FY 22 budget?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second?
You have a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll now move into the work session. We have two topics on the work session, one that I believe we may have to take action on tonight. First is Council of Aging. We had a discussion in our last meeting about options to try to help the folks in the Bryant community and the senior senator there. So, let me ask our Director of Council Aging, Mr. Chad Coleman, if he would give us an update on where we are with those options.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. As we've discussed options for the Bryant Senior Center over the past few meetings, and after our talks in multiple meetings, I feel like our focus has shifted to the option of constructing a new building on site after the county and if the county can buy the property. This will allow for more funding options to become available to help render some of the cost. So, before construction can begin, there are a few steps that must take place. Step one would be a title deed search must be completed to see if we can obtain the existing land and structure. This search is currently underway, but it's not been completed. We will be unable to move forward until this step is taken place. Step two would be the cost estimate, which this process is underway as well. I'm waiting on numbers to compare different types of structures, stick frame versus block versus metal, building on site. And step three will be funding, and the possibilities that look the most likely for us to obtain will be from TARCAG or through USDA funding. There will be a match with either one of these options. Both of these grants have multiple stipulations, and I'm in the process of working with both TARCAG and USDA at the moment, going through all the grant information, and to make sure that we will be able to qualify. So, as soon as the title search is being completed and I have received the building estimates and pre-qualifications for funding, I will bring everything back in front of the Commission, and we will discuss it further. So, if there's any quick questions or anything I can answer, please feel free to ask.
Any questions? Thanks for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
And I would believe at this point, when we have that information... Thanks for the work that you're doing, and I would believe at this point, when we have that information available, we'd like to bring the option back to the Commission for consideration. Next on the agenda is the solid waste. And we'd like to ask our Director of Sanitation to please address printing, inserting, and mailing bids.
In your packet, you should have the two bids we received for printing our monthly deals. The lowest bid was from November we are currently using. Their bid was thirty-one cents cheaper on postage, so I would like to remain with this vendor, and this will also need to be voted on tonight.
Okay, any questions or comments? Do I have a motion to set aside the rules to vote on this measure tonight? Do we have a motion, a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye. So do we have a motion to approve the recommended selection of contractor for the printing, inserting, and mailing services bids?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye. Motion carries. At this time, we'd like to move to reports from the staff. County Administrator?
Yes, sir. I want to also thank everyone, just about each Commissioner and all the department heads. Good lengthy work session, I think everybody saw and hopefully learns some things through it this year, but we had a very robust budget hearing this time, and I want to thank everyone involved. That's all.
Okay, thanks, sir. Our county engineer?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to provide some road updates on projects that are ongoing, and I'll start with County Road 491, just as a follow-up to previous discussions on this road. Cruisers out there with spray patching activities now to take care of the surface bonding issues that were present from the work that was done. Obviously, we're not satisfied with the results that were done with that project like we explained before, but we would like the opportunity to see what we can do with the spray patching. It produces a durable finished product. The challenge is going to be blended into that existing surface of the chip seal. So we're hopeful for that and for good results with that, and the contractor is scheduled to be here next week to also look at the work that was done and have some conversations about moving forward, if it's after the spray patch process or in addition to. County Road 376, 664, and Knox Lane, and these are all on the local road resurfacing list, and we feel like they're in reach before paving season ends. So finish prep work is required, as well as those sites being stocked with aggregate, but we're going to work toward and focus toward finishing that before, you know, season ended and temperature limitations catches. County Road 58, the patching is ongoing now on the cross trains that were replaced recently. Scrub seal will be required after that, and that project will be ready for an overlay. County Road 38, if you're getting alerts on your phone for the road closures on County Road 38, that's what this is about. There were two cross train replacements planned this week, two following next week. Those are the last four remaining cross train replacements for this project. The next step in that will be extra depth milling and patching, and then it'll be ready for the scrub and sand seal to complete that project, hopefully before winter. All these things I'm talking about in projects, that's our focus for this paving season. There were the rebuild Aladama selections, and we're going to work toward completing those hopefully before paving season end. County Road 189, that has not been forgotten about, it may be some times that you've heard from that. September 18th, a program manager with FEMA dropped me a note of good news, and let us know that that project is moving forward, and so I'm going to read some of his comments sent to us. "After discussion with the region, we have been able to fit the project scope of work into multiple ounces from the programmatic agreement. No section 106 needed. Section 106 is the historic preservation work. We talked about it can get lengthy into structural preservation or archaeological digs, artifact recovery, lengthy processes that are obviously long the life of the project. The only remaining item is the return concurrence of USFWS Section 7 consultation letter. That's U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, that's critters. Studies needed for anything that would be impactful to wildlife or fish, so we're hoping for that." They have, and he goes on to say, "It was sent to the service on 8/23/21. It usually takes thirty to forty-five days to get a response. I believe we have everything else at the moment. If the service concurs," and he's talking about Fish and Wildlife Service, "with NLAA not likely to adversely affect, for any potential species in the project area should be able to afford the project out of EHBCQ. So that means we'll get the green light to begin." We've obviously kept our contractor abreast of this, and he has a schedule for November. They've been on site recently, looking at the utility relocations, just making preparations where they can go as soon as they get the green light. So slate that now, pencil it in for November. Hopefully, we get an earlier start, but maybe November at the latest. And lastly, County Road 17, the roadway looks good, it's open, and there's a ribbon cutting scheduled for October 7th at 12:30. That's a Thursday, so please mark your calendars. With that, I'll take any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, okay, I went and checked out the growing development on 156.
Yes, sir.
Lot of inquisitive folks, lot of additional traffic on that road. I appreciate you putting the new signs up, that's a good addition. The quality of that road is terrible, especially coming off of 71 there. So what is the, what is the plan for 156?
So as we've talked before, we will be making local road suggestions for choosings. We'll get into some lengthy discussions on how many miles that we feel comfortable with affording, but in the short list, we'll be happy to present 156. And I can tell you that with the last year, you know, there's one section that's really poor condition, and then the others, you know, could use work here and there. So it narrowly missed the list last time to be presented to you all, so we'll be happy to have that in front of you on this next door.
Yeah, there's, I mean, while I was out, there's more traffic than I've ever seen on that road.
Lot of onlookers, as I understand it.
Yep. And I don't want that to be their impression of Jackson County.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Thank you all.
Thanks, Jonathan. County Attorney?
I'm here, thanks, sir.
Okay, any other questions or comments from members of the departments? Okay. With that, we'd like to get comments from our county Commissioners. Commissioner Rich?
I'm just glad that everybody's doing well. The ones that's sick and infected by the, any viruses or any sickness, I hope they get well soon, and just everybody just keep American in their prayers. Thank you.
Commissioner Venable?
I don't have anything to add, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner Buckner?
Yeah, I just, great excitement. Excuse me, October 1, Huntsville Hospital will come in and help us with our hospital, and I think it's going to be a tremendous upgrade. I was very, very thankful to be part of a meeting this weekend where we met the CEO of Huntsville Hospital. Great commitment on their part to not only keep our hospital, but bring it up to standard and have us with a quality viable option for health care here locally. So great, great day coming, October 1st in Jackson County.
Okay, thank you. I have no other comments. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm moving down the agenda here.
Wanted to echo what the other Commissioners said about the hard work and dedication put into this budget. It didn't just fall together, it took a lot of work and a lot of commitment, and for that, I want to say thank you to everyone. I'm happy to see our employees get some benefits that they weren't getting and a raise that they're well deserved, deserving of. Hopefully, in the future, we can do more without, say, y'all say so.
Okay, I just want to say thanks again, as we've all said, thanks to all of you, and please pass on to every one of your employees the great, the thanks for the great service they're giving the citizens of this county. It certainly means a lot, and it's great to have the opportunity to, from all of our perspectives, to work with it. With that, our next meeting is scheduled for October the 12th. Due to the holiday of October the 11th, we will have the meeting on Tuesday, October the 12th at 3:30. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second?
I'll say it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.